For Pembroke, thank you. Select Board meeting. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meeting SLS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Please join us. Please decide your question, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have any announcements to start with today?
I can save them or do now, whatever.
Up to you.
I'll save them.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, then we have a scheduled appointment at 7 o'clock, Public Safety Building Committee update with Vortex Companies LLC.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Allison Maha. I'm with Vortex. We're the owner's project manager on the public safety project. We were last here in May to give an update, so we're giving a status update since then. Kristi Martin is also on Zoom.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Okay. That's working.
Is that ready?
Yeah. Toggle it with an arrow, maybe?
That's okay. I'm just gonna start this again. We'll recapture the screen. All right. Let me know when you would like to advance or do that now.
So we'll review the schedule update, the budget update, and overview of design progress since last time and next steps.
It started working.
Oh, it did.
Yes, it did. That's the problem.
Okay. So the schedule, we, since we last met, we finished the design development documents and received estimates. We're giving the update tonight. We're, we received HGC approval on October 3rd, and we are in the permitting process with the town and Mass DOT right now. We, the design team is in the process of working on the 60% construction document coordination set, and we are, will have bid documents complete by the end of March to go out to bid in April. In January, we'll start the pre-qualification process for GCs and subcontractors. That takes a few months, and then we'll be ready to go out to bid. For construction, start in June for both substation and public safety. The, this budget update, we've shown you this format previously. The first column is the town approved budget. The second column is the schematic design update that we presented to you back in May. At this time, we had projected that we were about $1.5 million over budget without the auxiliary building. So since then, we've received estimates and reconciled estimates for the design development documents, and we are now showing without the auxiliary building that we are $51,000 to the good. So that's good news. We're still holding contingencies for the project, construction contingency at 4.5% and owner's project contingency at 1.75%. We feel comfortable with those numbers and the estimates that we've received. This is the public safety headquarters from the front of the building. Not really any design changes, just refinements since the schematic design. This is the site plan. Not many changes except for some site changes to, for cost savings. We did, the site did perk, so we were able to move the septic system under the drive, so there was some cost savings there. The mound out front is gone, but other than that, it's just design refinements, no changes to the site plan or design. The main building now is at about 38,000 square feet, and we're, the auxiliary building at 4,000 square feet. We're hoping to bid that as an alternate, so we're hoping to include that in the project. Maybe if, you know, bids come in, we'll be able to accept that as an alternate. Parking space is 130, which is a few more than we were showing before, but as far as program, everything has remained the same. This is the fire substation on Monroe and School Street, so this is showing the front of the building facing School Street. And the site plan, at the bottom, so no, no major changes here. The building is about 9,300 square feet. There's parking and program, same thing, no changes to the program. Next steps, we're gonna proceed with the 60% construction documents and final coordination check estimate against the design development. Subcontractor and GC pre-qualification process, we'll start that in January. We're gonna finalize the list of bid alternates to be included in the final bid documents and continue to hone in on the FFNE scope and solidify pricing from vendors and assume and confirm the budget assumptions. We'll finalize an agreement with National Grid for the Mass Save Program for incentives, and we are planning to bid in April 2025 and construction start summer 2025.
Questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So one thing that stands out, which I think is excellent, is that looking at the programming, the rooms, the capabilities for operations, et cetera, it looks like none of that has effectively or meaningfully changed. There is a reduction in square footage, at least from the last design update from May. It looks like 39,100 to 37,600 or so. So about 1,500 square foot reduction. Where did, where did that come from?
So when we did the schematic design, the estimates came in over budget, and then we did some value engineering to reduce, to, you know, efficiencies and reduce the, the square footage in the building. When we presented, we showed the estimated square footage that those represented, those value engineering represented, and since then, the, the design team actually, you know, drew it and, and put it in, in the documents, and that made, you know, along with some other efficiencies amounted to that 1,500. So that, before, it was more of an estimate, like, we think we can save this much square footage, but during design development, we actually put that into the drawings.
Okay. So what I'm gathering from that is probably a decent amount of fluff was probably taken out of the design, and then is there a place in specific where the 1,500 square foot mostly came from, or was it mostly like a little bit shaved off here, a little bit shaved off there? End up not being anything meaningfully meaningful for the different rooms?
Yeah. Nothing significant from what that list of value engineering items that we had, had shared previously. Nothing significant was taken out.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that the four different bays for the, for the fire station side of it have been maintained since, if I remember correctly, the very beginning even of the designs. I think there were four bays. Is that correct, or were there?
It was, it was up and down, but the four bays is what we were focusing on for the most part.
Okay, yeah. I thought I heard that there was some speculation that it was even going down, but it's been maintained.
Yeah, it was not. It was always the way.
We wouldn't lose, it wouldn't cost any more or less to have more or less, basically, less the way of scope.
Okay. Couple more questions. So the aux, the auxiliary building as the alternate, so it's there as an alternate now. If, if it can't be part of the construction, we can't end up building it, what are the plans with what we're gonna do for what we were going to use the auxiliary building for? I understand it was mostly gonna be storage, things like that. What are the plans if that doesn't work out?
So ultimately, we're gonna have to make some decisions. Use existing space such as the fire station across the street and/or go back to town meeting and ask for the money. That building is really inexpensive to build, builds, it's essentially a garage. I mean, it doesn't have all of the fancy services that you would expect in other buildings. That is a storage type of facility, so we're not there 100%. Actually, our goal is to get to the point where this comes in under bid and we can actually just do that facility. You have to remember, when estimators estimate, they don't always estimate to the low bidder. They estimate to, to, to a much higher percentage of, yeah, exactly. Thank you. So it's entirely possible and probably likely that this will end up in the project.
So it's, so we're caught, where, I mean, obviously, we can't tell the future, but it sounds like there is relative confidence that we will likely get the auxiliary building as an alternate with the bids that are coming.
Yeah, we hope so. I think when we talk about confirming that list of bid alternates, we'll, we'll be talking about what we include in the base. Like, we might, we're, well, what we have right now is all the connections, all the underground, everything to build the building except the building, and then, you know, will that include parts, you know, the whole building or pieces of it? That's how we'll set up the alternates and, you know, at least get as much as we possibly can.
So the design regardless is gonna be set up so an auxiliary building would ideally in the future be put in that spot?
Yes.
If we don't construct it now, we didn't set in the future, because that fire sta, the old fire station across the street, that's small. Much smaller than 4,000 square.
It is.
Okay. Another question, I, there was a, not a huge reduction in square footage in the substation, but there was a bit there. Same kind of idea? Some fluff removed and?
General efficiency, yes.
There was something about the hallway, too. Do you remember what that was?
Yeah, we kind of configured it.
The step.
Now it's all flat.
Right. There was, there was a step because of the terrain, and when they actually did this, the site work to look at that, it's all flat now, so you don't need that extra rope and something. It's, it's, it doesn't really change the building a whole lot.
It looks like the, what was originally on the side, where there was gonna be either some storage, I think it was originally these rooms over here were along the side over here. With this, with this bay here, there's not gonna be any issue, so that, if people moving in and out of this room?
Yeah, go ahead.
So that one will no longer be a?
That was one of the spots that we actually did compromise on. We, we ended up making the building more of a square, and we did take those storage rooms and used it. We basically tucked them into a half of a bay, which we felt still gave us plenty of, of.
You still have plenty of clearance to move if you need to come through.
Yeah, so the, the other two bays will be complete drive, they call them drive-through bays, so we'll be able, you know, but that third bay closest to the right, it'll have some storage rooms in the back, and it, that, that one bay won't, will not be a drive-through. The rest of them will be.
Okay. It'll mostly be, hopefully backing into there, something from the house.
Yes.
And by doing that, it's a large savings, because now you have a square building that's flat. You don't have to build that step and have all of that configuration within your design. So we was actually able to save a significant amount of money on, on the project.
Okay. And there was originally, I think, that there was another?
Roadways.
Roadway on the side there. That went away because?
Yeah, we just don't need it. I mean, this, this configuration works with the parking, drive-in, drive-out for the engines. We just didn't need that extra space.
Okay. The only other thing that jumps, that all makes a lot of sense, and it's all the, the bays, water room, it looks like, I was just reading down to 2.5. Everything else is the same, just the square footage. The parking spaces went from 19 to 10. Is that sufficient for, it's definitely sufficient for changeovers and so on and so forth?
Yeah, there's only, so if you have a large storm emergency where you're putting extra fire feathers there, you gotta max those parking spaces. If you, on a regular shift changeover daily, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, and on the original buildings, like, we have the two, two-bay saloon port?
We do.
As well, which is great, though, there was some questions around that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I got. I mean, I, I gotta say, I'm personally really impressed with how the savings went while keeping the programming the same and the function of the building the same. Makes a lot of sense. I get the, removing some of the fluff. I'll, I'll always say I'm not the happiest about the orientation and the side. You know, coming around there, I think a lot of people understand we are not, but.
Yeah, just, just one comment. I mean, you, you call it fluff, and I'll, I'll tell you where the big savings was, and, and that's in that big mound that was in front of that building in Washington where you turn in onto Barker. Without that mound, you now can, the building is now a little lower, the huge amount of retaining walls that we have in the back of this project aren't a huge amount of retaining walls anymore. There's still some retaining walls there, so the fill that you're putting in there, the mound that you had to do for your septic, the raising of the building because of the mound, with the, the septic underneath the entrance now, that, that's a huge savings. So we were able to do that. So we have flat buildings in the sense that there aren't steps between the buildings anywhere that, they're, they're level on both of our sites, and, and the site work that was required before is a substantial savings when you look at it.
Is there any plans to have any trees out in the, out over here in the front, or is it all just gonna be flat grass?
So the landscape plan is still being worked on.
Yeah, there, there are?
Yeah.
Some plantings there in a, in a pen.
Where the mound used to be in the front there, it just seems like?
Oh, in the front, oh.
Over here. This looks like a majorly unused, I don't know if there's an opportunity for an alternate there or something functional or aesthetic, because it's gonna be what a lot of people see. I know we're at the kind of end stages of design, but I'm just curious if it is.
The landscape plans are still, you know, we're still working the landscape, hence for sure. We're, we're working toward, you know, finishing up the DVD and into the CD, so, I mean, there's still time for, for that type of stuff. I would not allow, unless, unless you voted to make me do it, changes to the buildings at this point. I think it's time to move forward.
No, I understand.
Lock down the buildings and move forward.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's time to move forward, and, I mean, there's a lot of work, a lot of great work that I think you guys did here to make this work and fit within the budget and really not lose the stuff that we need. So, yeah, that's all I got.
We can confirm what it looks like up front first.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, yeah.
So I just wanna make sure that both buildings could pull in with the latest builder code, especially with the new energy code updates, and if they do, that's great. If, if you haven't evaluated that yet, then that'd be, that's a big question.
No, we're, we're definitely ahead of that, and actually, we're signing an agreement with, on the Mass Save Program with National Grid. Likely in a couple of weeks, that incorporates all of that, so.
Okay. Stretch energy code?
Yep.
This town is part of. Okay, that's, so I assume that was the case, but I had to ask the question. The other thing is, the auxiliary building is an alternate. Can, have you considered doing an alternate A and a B? So heated parking and storage facility versus a wide-open one, like the avenue or well? You, you see all, all the police cars lined up under like a portrait of Shay?
It's, the one we're, the one we're doing is not open. It's an enclosed structure.
Well, I understand that. That was always the plan, but I wonder if, if it is just an alternate?
Do with open.
You have an alternate A and an alternate B.
It's a good idea. We're making some.
I mean, I haven't even asked the, the chief or either chief if that works for what they want. Obviously, a conditioned space is much better for vehicles and any other equipment in there, but if it's not an alternate to have a shelter for the vehicles?
Yeah.
With the snowplowing, blowing equipment.
Mansfield has that. How they do it, too.
Yeah, Norwold.
Lead to, yeah. Just sorry, does, too.
Yeah. So, so if it is an alternate and someone has to price it separately anyway, if they could have a price A and a price B, I mean, it's, it's not most surprised that a condition, a conditioned space could have cost more money, and if it's more money, but we can afford it, all right, let's go for that. If it's, if it's less money to have the lead-to type of structure, but still keep the, the cars covered in the, you know, snowplowing equipment, other ancillary things, you know, at least out of the, the traffic rain.
Yeah, the challenge, the challenge under state statute, and I have to check with Council to see if there's any changes to that. I don't think there have been. If you do alternates, an A and a B, you must accept alternate A before you can accept alternate B under the statute. It sucks.
I think we would maybe make the base be the open and then the alternate be to change it to be?
Well, put that in the base, part of the base, yeah. That would work. That would work. Good idea.
Yeah. So, so consider those options. I, listen, you folks have been working on this diligently for about two years now, so if you say that, no, this town really needs this, these two departments need this, you know, I'll support that, but if, if you're looking for alternatives, I'll put that out there for you to think about. Thank you.
Anyone else? John Rich?
You guys have any questions?
One more question. In the design, are there any plans to include any wiring for potential solar?
Did we put?
I thought we had.
I don't, I'll have to find out. I don't remember.
I, yeah, I have to check on that.
So can I, can I just mention enough for this specific project, but every project in Massachusetts, you have to have the infrastructure capable of putting solar?
Correct.
And you actually have to put a ghost solar plant on your roof, whether you do it or not.
So, yes, but we're only gonna, we're not gonna do the wa, the, I don't think we're doing the wiring for the solar.
You, you don't have to?
Right. It's part of, it's part of the plan.
It's part of the plan that you have to have it available to do? Doesn't mean you ever gonna plug it in. Maybe we want to, or?
I ask because, especially, I think there's still some remaining subsidies, at least federal subsidies. I think definitely 30 or 40%, that's my understanding.
It's a tax advantage. We don't pay tax.
Oh, that's what, it's a tax-based advantage. It's not a credit.
Right. Tax scheme. No, if, so if you're a corporation or a private citizen, you get a tax break on it.
That's right.
A town doesn't pay any tax.
That's right. It's a moot point.
You might get a reduced rate, but we're doing pretty well on our solar right now.
We maxed out on our solar right now?
We, we have, I'll, it's probably a discussion for another night, but yes, we are, we are killing it, yes.
Anyone else? We have a vote to accept the resignation of Sue Renee from Affordable Housing Committee.
Move to accept resignation of Sue Renee from Housing Committee.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to accept the minutes of November 20th, 2024.
Motion to accept the meetings of November 20th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Vote conditional renewal of annual liquor licenses subject to treasurer, building, health, inspectional services, and fire department approval. Anybody have any questions about these?
I'll just reach out to town manager Sabrina. Is everyone's paperwork in for this board to make the decision tonight?
I'll let her enter, and then I'll give her credit for the work she did.
Town manager's office is pleased to report that all violations have been cleared up. There is, everyone has passed inspection. There's no outstanding debt owed. All terms and conditions have been met, and everyone is ready for renewal.
And, and I just wanna add to that. I wanna personally thank my staff, Sabrina and Angela, for a remarkable job on this. They chased some of these people down and really went after them to make sure all the taxes were paid, everything was appropriate, and that all the applications were nailed off, so.
With sugar and kindness.
Huge, huge kudos to them.
Well, thank you, Sabrina and Angela. Why does City Arena still say pending, though?
Because they don't have a number yet.
We could still?
They've, they've been inspected now.
Okay.
But the idea being if you don't vote to renew them, if the approval comes through, that's, that's gonna be good.
Now we have to wait, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I would move to renew eligible Pembroke liquor licenses as listed on the public agenda for the year 2025, subject to the approval of the DMI, town manager, and treasurer as required by the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, and I, I should actually thank our inspection staff, too, because, because I, Pita, Pita Pre and Deputy Shay also did a remarkable job in making sure these people, because some people were.
Questioned.
Exactly. Make sure that they pass their inspections.
Well, we appreciate that.
Awesome job, Jim. Awesome.
Thank you. All right. Town manager's report. What do we have tonight?
So three things, all exciting opportunities on Saturday. We are gonna start with Fill a Cruiser by our public safety folks from 10 to 2. That's gonna be right next door at 80 Center Street at the police station. Please donate an unwrapped gift. We're gonna fill the cruiser. We hope we fill more than a cruiser, but we're gonna call it Fill a Cruiser, and we'll just keep filling until we're done. So that's 10 to 2 on Saturday. Second event is the tree lighting ceremony, begins at 2:00 PM. 2:00 PM will be a ceremony for the veterans' tree, and then moving on, and the tree lighting will be at about 4:45. Super excited about that show up. Santa may show up. I have some reliable information that he's on his way, so that'll be awesome. And then the final event on Sa, Jason, that's gonna be kinda strange. I know. So the final event on Saturday would be the Winter Lights Road Race, beginning at 5:00 PM. Folks, the runners will take off down Center Street to the southeast and loop around and come back and finish here at the community center. So super events, come on out, participate. We're, we're excited to be able to offer these to our residents.
Thank you, Phil. Do we have any Leos on updates tonight? Do we have any old business or new business?
Old business. Are we still on track for our next meeting to have the presentation?
One, we have several.
Water?
Absolutely, yes. We are on track. I actually met with Dan Sullivan today. We're going through that. We have a template, I've set up a template, and we're excited about that, so. There'll be some information that will be tentative pending the final master plan, but, you know, we'll, we'll have a great deal of information that evening.
Can we, can we make sure we advertise that on our website and social media?
Sure.
There's, you know, there's always this rumbling about brownwater here and there, and, you know, there's, there's reasons for it that we discuss, and in, in the system is getting better and better, and hopefully, that'd be perfect, but it's getting better and better, right? So if, just put it out there, so if anyone has any specific instances in their house or neighborhood, maybe they wanna come, that's the date to come.
Do you wanna advertise for a follow-up date in case the week before Christmas becomes problematic?
I don't think so, because, I mean, we could talk about it at any meeting, but it's just, it's kinda like a particular one. Dan's gonna be here, and, you know, Bill, you're one of the guys, but Dan's also one of the guys, you know? To have you both in the same room would be a good time for someone to reach out if they, if they actually did have a question or a specific problem.
We do, we do have on the website those who have problems with brownwater or whatever it may be, too, for kind of a complaint page. So we started that right after we did our flushing.
Of course.
And I always wonder if it's, if it's a different conversation if we're all here together rather than, you know, typing annually on Facebook.
Yes, absolutely, but I think Mr. Sullivan will come anytime to do the CEP and quarterly. I don't think I have a problem with that, just to check in and update. This is something he's very invested in. So he actually has gone through and audited the responses on the initial flush of that form. If you recall, we weren't gonna promote it heavily until after the fire flow testing, which is when we got 58 of our responses. Worked that out. People are using the form. We've had ample opportunity to modify it. It's on the website, and Dan's, Dan's been really advocating for that, and he is in real time responding to these issues that we're having. The remaining complaints outside of that window, he would ask anyone who fills out the form, and we modified it today to make it a required field. Please remember to include date and time, because knowing at some point in time at 100 Center Street there might have been a problem isn't that helpful. And my smart analog is gonna say we call it discovered.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. Any new business? Do we have any comment from the board?
We do have on the website those who have problems with brown water or whatever it may be too, for kind of a complaint page. So we started that right after we did our flushing.
Of course.
And I always wonder if it's a different conversation if we're all here together rather than, you know, typing handbrow on Facebook.
Yes, absolutely, but I think Mr. Sullivan will come anytime to do these weekly quarterly. I don't think I have a problem with that, just to check in and update. This is something he's very invested in. So he actually has gone through and audited the responses on the initial blush of that form. If you recall, we weren't gonna promote it heavily until after the fire flow testing, which is when we got 58 of our responses. Worked that out, people are using the form. We've had ample opportunity to modify it, it's on the website, and Dan's been really advocating for that, and he is in real time responding to these issues that we're having. The remaining complaints outside of that window, he would ask anyone who fills out the form, and we modified it today to make it a required field. Please remember to include date and time, because knowing at some point in time at 100 Center Street there might have been a problem isn't that helpful? And my smart aleck is gonna say we call it discovered.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you. Any new business? Do we have any community comment from the board? Do we have any community comment from our audience? Thank you. All right, upcoming issues. December 18, it's at 7 o'clock, we have the American Legion Presentation of Medal of Liberty to the Carter family. January 22, the board votes to open annual warrant on February 3, and February 5, we have the town manager's FY '25 budget update. Do I have a motion to?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.